It's School District, I apologize, we're starting about 20 minutes late due to my being delayed at work. But we're all here now, Lisa Coram, we're waiting for Member Ash to arrive, but we can get going. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Here.
President Affeld?
Present.
Student Representative Brown emailed me, she has been in the hospital, and she regrets not being with us and apologizes, and we were trying to get the alternate, but I don't know whether the alternate will be here.
Okay, thank you for that update, and our best wishes to student Member Brown. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America. A duty republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. ... with liberty, justice, and...
Do we have any changes to the agenda Superintendent?
Yes, good evening, we'd like to ask for one change if we could, we have the fortunate pleasure of having one of our great Anna Yates teachers here with us this evening, Ms. Corpus, and as well as Ms. Jamila Dunn from Cala Art Institute, so there are, we're expecting a few students, and so we'd like to know if we could move that item up to be placed just after the annual reorganization.
Is that before Item 7 and 8, which is election of county representative and non-board of tri- or immediately before Item 9, consent calendar?
I'd say let's go for right before Item 9.
Okay.
Although, although, I'm sorry, I apologize, let's, let's, let's do it before, before Item 7 if we can. If, if, I believe the students are coming around 6:30. Okay, so I think we should be in good shape, and if I'm wrong, then I'll...
Okay, I would prefer that we have as many board members as we can here for the reorg.
Ah, that's right.
And we're short one in that Member Dice's step down.
Ah, that's right, that's right, so, so...
So, I, I don't know if we have an ETA, apparently we don't, on Ms. Ash?
We don't, we do have, I know we have the boys, we have some students from the boys' basketball team and their coach here with us, and they are here in the room, they're available if we want to move forward with consent first and place that first on the agenda tonight.
I think we could, I think that's a good suggestion, and the boys' basketball, is that something we anticipate in public comment? Or do we...
No, I don't think so, no, in, in public?
We, we don't have an agendized item on the boys' basketball, do we?
We do, for an overnight field trip.
Oh, I see, I was...
On consent.
I see, okay.
So I'm wondering if we want to go ahead and start with the consent calendar, the minutes, the approval of the overnight field trip and the ratification list at the beginning of our meeting, and then if we could move right from that, maybe we can go ahead and then move to the presentation by Ms. Corpus and a couple of the students.
So is that, tell me what number you want to...
Sure.
You want to insert that, are we doing, going through board reports, I mean going through reports and then consent, and then the Cala Art Institute item?
Let me just, I think so, Ms. Corpus, are we expecting some more students still?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, so yeah, let's go, if we could, I'm suggesting we start with reports and move to consent, and then move to the Cala Art student presentation.
Okay, and then hopefully we'll, we can reassess at that point?
Yeah.
But proceed down the line, down the line at that point, okay? So I think it's, there's a motion to amend the agenda to insert after reports, Item Number 5, the consent calendar, and then after the consent calendar, Item 10.1, the Cala Art Institute presentation, and after the Cala Art Institute presentation, then proceed with the agenda as set. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
You shoot us in 5:17?
5, consent.
5:9.
So 5, 9, 10.1.
Okay. Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Sure.
President Affeld?
Yes. Okay, with that set, we're now on Item 4, which is public comment period, this is a time for public comment on any items not on the agenda. Is there any public comment? Okay, no public comment. Reports, do we have an ETA report tonight? Or CSEA report? Student representative is not yet present, so we don't have that. Superintendent's report?
Yes, good evening, I have just a couple of things to report on tonight, one, I'd like to share that I went to the city council meeting last night and just gave the city council an update of a couple of things. One item was, I wanted to report to the city council and make sure I've shared this with the board if I haven't done so previously, is that we have a new commitment from Cal State University East Bay, we're very excited about, they are committed to establishing science programming in, in our science lab from about 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, starting in January and on Saturdays throughout the year, where the space becomes what they're calling a circle lab, available by video streaming for other locations to participate, with programming by programs that we have so far, like Scientific Adventures for Girls, but also by trainers who want to come in, by adults who might consider teaching science or changing careers, for parents and our teachers for training, and this is all coming with a commitment from Cal State University East Bay, that they will do the programming and the scheduling of professionals and trainers to come in, and Wareham Development, again, is supporting the district in our ongoing increase in programming in science, so I just wanted to announce that, and I let the city council know, and I thought that was great news for us, particularly for, again, adding additional services that we can provide in science. The other thing I wanted to let the city council know about last night was that, just an update for them and for the board, that as you, most of you may know, the seniors have been using our facility here since June 30th, as the senior center is being remodeled, and we've been very pleased by how that's going, I think it's a good example of the strong partnership we have with the city, and we have about, according to city staff, about 50 to 100 seniors using this building, and this room in particular, depending on the class, and last week the seniors had their holiday gala here with about 140 seniors in attendance, and again, we shared that with the city council because we thought it was a great example of the strong partnership we have with the city, and I'm, I'm always encouraged to see seniors doing salsa and tap dance and other things, and trying to, you know, I hope to get there one day in terms of my time, but, so I wanted to share that, and I'd share one more thing that I don't know if you'll get a chance to hear from any of the students later or not about, on this item or the coach, but I was happy to see that we had the coach who's in attendance tonight in the meeting, and some of our high school basketball students at the city meeting last night, where Draymond Green, who plays on the Warriors, was given the key to the city, and some of our students were, had the fortunate pleasure, I think, to get their picture with Mr. Green, and so it was a nice event, and that is the extent of my superintendent's report this evening.
Wow, that's great.
Thank you.
I've been hoping to run into Mr. Green at the store, I've told he frequents our local establishments, that hasn't happened yet, so that, that's great, that he connected with our, our basketball team. For President's report, just very briefly, wanted to let folks know, including the board members, I did spend some time on Friday in Mr. Kovan's class at the high school, as sort of a follow-up to her presentation at our November 18th meeting of, you know, some very well-expressed concerns from students about state of affairs and their, their feelings of support or lack thereof at the high school, and, and was primarily observing her class, she had a, she had a full schedule, and very interesting lesson on George Orwell's 1984, and the notion of revolution and struggle and conflict, and I thought, thought she did a great job, and, but I did spend some time talking with the students as well. The, that, that concludes my board report. We are now going to move on to the items we inserted, which first is the consent calendar, Item 9, 9.1 to 9.4. Do we have any items from the consent calendar that anyone would like to poll? And let me start by saying, since we have our, our basketball team here, I'll, I'll pull the overnight field trip request, so folks can talk to that. Other than that, do we have any items that board members would like to pull from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull the ratification list, 9.4.
Okay. Anything else?
None.
None.
None, fair enough.
No.
Okay.
We need a second to get John Baker in the room.
We need a second to get John in the room?
Oh, it's not a...
You don't mean a second, like a second vote?
A minute.
No.
You mean a minute. Yeah. It's okay, I think I can do it without him.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, yes. Well, let's go with the warrants, 9.1, and the minutes of the December 2nd meeting, 9.2, do we have a motion to, on, on those items?
So moved.
Second? I'll second, roll call please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Okay, let's go to Item 9.3, approval of overnight field trip, do you want to present this item Superintendent?
Good evening, this item is for review for the board to request approval for an overnight field trip, the boys' basketball coach at our high school, Mr. Corey Cornelius, is seeking approval to take the team to Los Angeles, he's provided the board this evening with itinerary, which it looks like it includes an exciting potential game between the Los Angeles Clippers and the Sacramento Kings. Mr. Cornelius, do you want to come up and say anything to the board?
Yes, speak into the mic, please.
Thanks.
Hello, we are requesting to go to Los Angeles on Saturday, January 16th, through Monday, January 18th, during that time period, we will play at West Torrance High School, we will play a team from Los Angeles that's nine and three, and then the following Monday, we will play, the following Monday, we will play at Los Osos High School in my home city of Ranch Cucamonga on MLK Day. We are planning, as of currently, right now, to fly Virgin America from SFO on Saturday at 7:00 AM to Los Angeles, we will stay in Ontario, California, thanks to Ferber and his little side business with, at a hotel there for two nights, on Saturday after our game, we will go to Staples Center and go in a luxury box and watch the Kings destroy, I mean, the Clippers destroy the Kings, and then Sunday, we will go to Six Flags, Magic Mountain, and then Monday, we will play, and then they will fly from Ontario Airport to, to Oakland, and that will conclude our trip.
Terrific, and I'm just curious how you financed the, the trip, I see it costs $1,500 or so?
The team is currently, all the players on the team are paying for half the trip and I'm paying for the other half, and then we are also doing a candy fundraiser as we speak, going forward right now.
Okay, well, we certainly appreciate your dedication, both...
Thank you.
On the court, instructing these young men, and, and even to the level of pulling money out of your own pocket, so...
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you giving them this opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity for the tax write-off.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, the, the, one question I had was how many chaperones, but you, it's in the materials, it looks like you have four dolls.
Yeah, we have three currently, myself and my two assistants, I'm the head varsity soccer coach, and then we're working on the athletic director, Ferber has said he will be in the area that weekend to watch us play, but he has told us he's not staying with us, so that is currently the plan on that.
Okay, well, that's, that's a pretty good ratio, even if it only is three of you, but yeah.
We're taking 10 kids as of right now, so we're off to an eight and one start, so this trip would really help solidify us going into the playoffs.
Great, well, best of luck, and...
Thank you.
You know, fully support your, your going down and, and getting a couple wins for Emery.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Sounds fun.
Do we have a motion on this item?
So moved.
Or, I'm sorry, any other public comment on this item? Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you guys.
And ratification list, Member Pats?
So really, this is more of a discussion, I just, I'm, with all that's been going on, I have been following this but not as closely as maybe I should, I just want to say it's been a lot of talk around security cameras and, and security systems, and, in passing, and I just, it's one of the change items, and I, I have not taken the opportunity to say, I, I always worry when people equate security cameras with safety, security cameras are about catching things after the fact and not actually keeping kids safe, and more importantly, I just think Emery has a, a rough history around security cameras, and I, I think, I want to be sure that we're very transparent with them in, in the future, and I'll, we can talk offline, but I just wanted to be sure that you were aware, and so I just, I wanted to make sure that as we put in, I think it's more cabling or conduit for security cameras, they don't have the impact that people think they do, they don't make kids safer, they actually are something that people put in but are not, they're not something that intervenes and keeps kids safe, they're something that you use to catch after the fact, so I'll just throw that out there, so that was my big question on that.
Okay, any other comments about the ratification list? Mr. Baker, since you're here, and we have the ratification list in front of us, my question, I guess, would, would be, how, how many more of these do you think we, we may be seeing, this is a number of items, you've told us some of these are coming, I guess, just bring us up to date on that.
I can't speak to the exact, oops. The exact number of items that we'll have, I would imagine we'll probably have about this many, six or seven items between now and the end of the project, they're things that we've been carrying for some time, we're in the process...
Sorry, six or seven total, six or seven each meeting?
Probably six or seven each meeting, I would guess, the number of those, as we close things out, we don't have, we're not getting many newer ones, we've had some on the list for quite some time, is as we go through the negotiation process with Turner, we close out the pricing for these, we're every day reviewing from small items to medium items and going through those and using our, with our estimators negotiating down the pricing, and when we finish those is when we bring them to the board for, for, for the ratification list. But I, if you'd like, I can give a report, I can look at the number that we anticipate and bring those forth in my next update, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be good with a, an update on, you know, how much of the contingency we're spending down, and what if anything, I think you told us last time, we're not, we're expecting to spend the contingency down and not have any leftover.
Yes, and we, we've been doing some good work, I think, the last few weeks, and we're doing better than expected in, in many of these items, and I think we're, I think the contingency picture looks a bit better than it did when I last spoke to the board.
Okay, well, that's always good to hear. Any other questions for Mr. Baker?
My...
Yeah.
Mr. Baker, one question pertaining to correspondence, or COR number 182, can you explain that a little bit further, it's the elevator rise and structural coordination between the architect and the structural engineer?
Yes, what that is, is that there was a dimension differential between, there's a dimension bust, if you will, between the structural and architectural drawings of, I believe it was about nine inches total length, and it resulted in, it was actually, in fact, it was actually a bust between the structural and architectural and civil drawings, the ground level elevator is actually nine inches below what the drawing showed, and so this was added length, if you will, of the elevator shaft and, and, and all, all the other construction to get that nine inches.
Okay, it just, the description that was given, it didn't make sense. Just clarification on that.
Yeah, that's correct, that's the issue though.
Okay, no, no further questions.
Any public comment on this item? All right, do we have a motion?
Do we have some public comment? Yes, a public comment.
All right, do we have a motion on the ratification list?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Marion moved, second by Ash, roll call please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Okay, now we are going to move to our first discussion item, 10.1, which is a, on the Cala Art Institute, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, good evening, as the board knows, and I think many of you know, we continue in the school district to add programs and, that we think are really beneficial for our students, and we have added programming last year, and this year again at the sixth grade and at the high school, and I was very excited to go by Anna Yates a few weeks ago and see the project sixth graders were finishing, and so we're happy to have this evening tonight, Ms. Corpus, and also Ms. Dunn from the Cala Art Institute, who have been continuing to partner with the school district, which is, again, another, a part of some great programming we have, and actually, again, with support from Wareham Development as well, helping us, so if you would come up, and Ms. Dunn, I don't know if you want to start as well. And parents, thank you for, for coming tonight and bringing your children, we greatly appreciate your time.
Great, thanks for the introduction, again, I'm Jamila Dunn from Cala Art Institute, and we've been partnering with the school district for many, many years, in the last two years, we've been working with Ms. Corpus's class at the sixth grade level, as Mr. Rubio said, we'd like to bring in art integration projects into the school so that kids can learn their academic subjects differently, and in a very hands-on way, so I'm excited to hear what these ladies have learned and what they're making, and we're just also excited to continue our partnership with the school in the spring, again with Ms. Corpus, we'll also be working with the fourth grade classes at Anna Yates, and doing another project at the high school level this year, so that's what we're looking forward to, thank you.
Good evening, board members, my name is Helena DeMesse.
My name is Sunakshi Jindal.
And we will be presenting our, our Cala Earth Science art project.
First, Helena will, will be presenting on what we have been learning in earth science, and then I will be presenting how we made the earth with Ms. Julia from CLA.
This project helped me understand earth science by allowing me to explore the four layers of the earth and what they are, I also learned that the crust is the thinnest layer of the earth, the, the names of the four layers are crust, ocean, mantle, outer core, inner core, and, yeah, and inner core. The inner core is the hottest layer of the earth, something else is that the mantle is the largest layer of the earth. I would recommend the board to do this project again, I think this would be a great experience for other students, it is also a fun way to learn and try new things. Cala Art doesn't just give you the answer, but they help you and make you figure it out yourself, most students did something they didn't know they could do, for example, a student who has never did, never done any stitches was the first one to be done, also the students' stitches were great. So, this is a crust? That's the crust. This is the mantle, the second layer, this is the outer core, the third layer, and this is the inner core, the fourth layer. So this is Sunakshi, Sunakshi, what she did, this is showing, what, this is telling us about what she did, what the earth is about, this is information about it, and this is an example of what the earth would look like.
I like the CLA art project, I love sewing and painting the most, I visualized my project and had the exact image of the earth in my mind, in my project, I made the earth out of fabric, I cut six pieces of fabric and stitched them together in the form of earth, then I stitched the zipper on, next I drew earth on the fabric and pasted foil inside the earth to make it hard, then I pasted some cloth on top of the foil to remind me of the earth's interior, at last, I painted my earth from outside to make it present table, now I can visualize my earth whenever I want to. First, we did sewing, then we sketched, then we sketched the continents or the earth on the fabric, then we painted our drawings, and then we visualized what, what our earth, and that's an example of our project, this is my classmates doing this project, thank you.
On behalf of the entire sixth grade, we wanted to thank the board formally, that this has been such an enriching project for the students, especially with such a complex, complex content of earth science, and most of it is all visual, for them to have something hands-on that we'll actually be referencing throughout the year for these vast systems of the earth, that it really brings in the common core standards that we've been focusing on in our class, and SC 7N 3.2 identified the benefits and limitations of the use of scientific models, and this was such a great way to segue art with science in the sixth grade, so thank you.
Ms. Corpus, if we, if we have some questions for the students, are they able to come back? Are there, well, I, I was curious about the sketching part, first of all, this is terrific, and really... and really excellent, excellent work in general and, and very nice presentation by you both. So, thank you for coming and making our board meeting, because these are often the best parts, is when we actually hear from the teachers and the students and see what's going on in the, in the classroom, instead of talking about numbers and budgets and other things. My particular question was about the sketching and how, how did you draw the continents and, you know, was it freestyle or were you using some kind of stencil or how did you get to that point?
We were using color pencils, or maybe some people were using sketches to draw the continents, so they can be darker. And, and then we painted them.
Were you just eyeballing? Because these look like the continents to me.
Yeah.
So, you didn't have a pattern or something that you were following?
We tried to do our best with the patterns, but we did, um, we tried our best to do with the, the patterns. As much as we could, we made the same. But if we, but some of it was different than what the map showed, because it was a circle, that's why.
It's sort of hard to draw on a, on a circle or a half circle.
So, my part is, some students, they chose to sketch it a little bit, like with a pencil. That's what I did to get the continents correct. Some students, they just visualized it and then they painted it onto the sphere, and they created the Earth. So, what I did was, I sketched it and then actually I created my own colors and I painted it on to, like, create a real effect-ish.
I have a question, if you don't mind, President Affeld. Just between those two methods of sketching it first and visualizing it, which do you think was, worked out to be more accurate? And I'm just curious of what evidence you have of what you, what you, what you would say to that.
Well, what I would say to that is, I think the sketching is easier because if you visualize it, you might not get the correct shape you want. But if you, if you sketch it on, it's easier because you would be able to know exactly where to put it and where to fill it in, and know exactly where the, the continents would go.
Did you notice, I guess the second part of my question is, did you notice among your, your fellow students that those students who sketched it first had better proportionality or more accurate representation?
Yeah, I noticed that. Some students did better than others, but everybody tried their best.
Okay, that's great.
And more questions?
Other questions?
Just a minor comment. A great concept and excellent execution. It really defines and creates an idea that is, you know, you can see it and it's tangible, and it's a really, really good execution.
Thank you.
And this may be clear to the board, I'm sorry, President Affeld, this may be clear, but, you know, just to make sure it is clear. My understanding is that the students, that you guys cut the canvas, that you did all the sewing on your own, including the sewing of the zipper. And I'm just wondering, I, well, I'm just impressed by, by, by that. So, thank you for that.
No, no more questions. Okay. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Thank you for that. Okay. Seeing, seeing no public comment on the item, thank you, Ms. Corpus and Ms. Dunn for, for coming in and bringing students with you. And keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, parents.
And thanks, thank you, parents, for coming and supporting.
Thank you.
Okay, the, the next item, we are circling back then to the, the annual reorganization of the board of trustees. And this is where we elect our own officers. And historically have taken volunteers for assignments to external committees that we've had board members sit on. The first item under the annual reorganization is election of the president of the board. Do we have any, I guess, comment or discussion or, and/or nomination for this position?
I nominate John Affeld for president.
Thanks.
Any other comments, discussion? Alternative nominations? Why don't we see if there's a second on that nomination?
I will second the nomination.
I was afraid of that. Any other competing nominations? Okay. I think we should take public comment, see if there's any public comment on the motion that's pending. Okay, seeing none. Any discussion on this motion to renominate, reelect John Affeld as president?
I have strong reservations about continuing with you in this role. I think we've had a challenging year with your sort of guiding the agenda. And I, I, I find it, I find it, when I talk to the community, when I talk to the teachers, I, I, I don't know that we're sending the right message, that we're going to continue doing things the same way. You know, I, I think you mentioned trust last time. And I know for the community, for a portion of the community, that's very much in question with you in this role, and, and valuing the input from the community. So, I just want to say that. So, you won't be getting a vote of support from me on this, so.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you for your comment. Mr. Pats, any other discussion on the pending motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
No.
President Affeld?
Yes. Okay, the next item on the annual reorganization is election of vice president of the board. Do we have a nomination, a comment, a question on this item?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Dunn.
Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Do we have any public comment on the, the nomination of Don Marion as vice president of the board? Okay, board discussion. Any board discussion on Don Marion as vice president of the board? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. The next item is election of clerk of the board of trustees. Do we have a nomination? Question or discussion about this, for this position? I would nominate Member Pats to continue in this role.
Second, second.
Any discussion or any public comment on this nomination? Is that a role you're willing to continue in?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we need a clerk. Member Pats has performed the role and is willing to continue. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Appointment of the secretary to the board of trustees. By our bylaws, we designate this position of secretary of the board to superintendent. And is there, is there any comment, question or nomination to that effect or other? I move we continue the appointment of secretary as the superintendent.
I'll second.
Okay, any public comment? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. All right, item 6.5, the next item, is the board calendar. And I'm going to let the superintendent present the board calendar as proposed. Two attachments in, on the, which one should I be looking at, Ms. Tamarie? The 2016 board calendar or?
In my zeal to show you the, the holidays, I attached them both, but this, you want the 2016, 2016 board calendar?
Yeah, 2016 board calendar. So, we're looking at the calendar year.
Yes.
Yeah. The original attachment, if you're paying attention, was a school year calendar, 1617. And what we're actually voting on here is the calendar year, calendar, which is the new attachment. And the, days in yellow are the, for each month, are the ones that are the proposed board meeting dates, which is basically to continue on Wednesdays, the second and fourth Wednesday of each month, with the exception of July, when school is out and the board does not meet. That's the continued proposal. And the other alteration consistent with what we did this year is to make sure we have at least three meetings between November and December. And because of Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays and Veterans Day, we, we, we could have, end up having just one meeting in November and one in December. But we did it this year is that we had three between the two months, and I think it's a good practice to continue. Certainly can be a busy time of year. So, the proposal, as you see it, is to, in addition to our second and fourth Wednesdays for November, have a meeting on the second Wednesday and the last, the fifth Wednesday, which is November 30th, and then one meeting in December, on December 14th, 2016. So, any questions about the 2016 board calendar? Any public comment? Discussion about the, the board calendar? How about a motion, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Mar, member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Okay, the next item is item seven, election of county representative of the board of trustees. This is a position that Member Marion currently holds.
Yes, that's correct.
And it is a, basically a representative to the Alameda County School Boards Association?
That is correct.
Yes. Do you want to illuminate us on the duties, functions, or lack thereof?
The latter word is the most pertinent, latter, lack of. There has been very little correspondence between the county and, and the district and being a representative and asking for contact. It's very little contact with the, with the county.
Nonetheless, it probably makes sense to continue to have at least our designated representative.
And I will redouble my efforts in gaining more access.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, this is not, this is not with the county office of ed, but with the school board association, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, it's not good hearing back from the county, but it's
I'm sorry, yeah.
Hearing back from the association. I just want to make sure I was
You are correct.
Okay.
All right. Do, do we have a volunteer to, it sounded like I, I heard a willingness to continue in that position?
Yes, I will, I will continue.
Okay. Is anyone else interested or willing to, to be in that position?
For the county school board? I think one representative is fine. Are you saying we need more than one?
No. Okay. Do we have a motion that Member Marion be our county school board association representative? I'm going to move. I'll, I'll take that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Public comment? All right. Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. All right, the next item is the various non-board-created committees that we similarly seek volunteers to serve on. Superintendent, you want to go over this list?
Sure, thank you. That's correct. These are committees where we look for representatives on boards not created, excuse me, groups not created by the board. On the list, we first have the Alameda County School Board, I believe, the School Board Association?
Yeah. Which is same thing we just
Same one we just took care of, I'm sorry. If anyone's taken care of. We have the City Schools co-chair. That one is currently vacant, based on the recent vacancy by Ms. Dice. So, we do need a co-chair on the City Schools Committee. We have the Emeryville Housing Committee, currently being represented by Member Pats. We have the Black Elected and Faith-Based Officials, which is vacant. We have the Emeryville Child Development Center ECDC Advisory Committee, which is currently held by Karen Steele. And we have the RDA Oversight Committee, which I believe was previously also held by Member Dice, and is currently vacant. Traditionally, just, I'm sorry, one second. Traditionally, I know at this point, we have also, or I have also asked for volunteers for some of my committees that I've created. But I know there's been confusion about that, so I'm, I'm not asking for that at this point in the evening. Did you want to?
I found out after the board pack, it was published, that the ECDC Advisory Committee has actually been disbanded. Dr. Steele informed me of that. So, for all of you who are looking at Agenda Online, you'll see that it's been disbanded.
Okay. So, I guess we can cross that one off our list. Why don't we start with City Schools co-chair?
I'd be happy to co-chair the City Schools Committee.
Great.
I like working with Councilman Donahue, so. I like working with Councilman Donahue, so.
All right, do we have any other interest in co-chairing City Schools? All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Any public comment on this item? Okay, the roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Athel?
Yes.
Don't remember voting on these last years, this seems odd to me that we're voting on the, at least voting on them individually. I could be wrong, but I just remember taking individual votes on these last year.
They're reflected that we did, but I think you may actually be right that we kind of assigned them all and then had one big vote at the end.
Yeah, just, so.
Yeah. Emeryville Housing Committee, is that even meeting?
They meet regularly, it's a good meeting. I find with time commitments, if I'm gonna move over to City Schools, it'd be a challenge for me to do both the City Schools and the Housing Committee. But I do think, particularly with the city's big push on family-friendly housing, I think there's a big impact for us as a district to encourage and continue that, you know, the Housing Committee itself is, there's several bodies that oversee housing, and so it's just one of them, and it's an adjunct. But I do think it has some value, but at this point in time, I don't know that I would wanna, I don't know that I would be able to give it the time that it deserves.
Well, I agree with you that it would be good if we could have a Board Representative on the Housing Committee and have some presence in discussions, since the housing patterns and the affordability of housing certainly affect our schools. Do we have any particular interest in doing that?
I'm a little busy.
You're busy. Yeah, I don't feel I can make a commitment beyond continuing as Board President, so maybe we leave that open for a potential Board Member who is yet to join us, an unknown. All right, let's move on then. We don't currently have any Black-Elected officials sitting amongst us anymore, unfortunately. So unless someone is interested in serving on the Black-Elected and Faith-Based Officials, Representative of this Board, maybe we should move, leave that one vacant. And also perhaps maybe we will be able to fill that after our next appointment, at least. We can't right now. You say ECDC's been disbanded, so that just leaves us the RDA Oversight Committee. This is-
Does that still exist?
I think it does. Ms. Tamarie, you wanna illuminate us what you know about it and?
I know that they do still meet, and I think it is a name that goes to the County Superintendent who makes the appointment, actually. The Board puts forth a name for the County Superintendent's consideration.
Yeah, this is a committee that oversees, that the Legislature created in recent years as part of legislation that disbanded redevelopment agencies. And the committee, as I understand it, assists with the role of figuring out how to disperse the assets of the redevelopment agency and decide what obligations continue and which don't continue, and how they should be, I guess, paid out. And we are, do a spot, owe to spot, have a spot, as a taxing entity in Alameda County on this committee. So with our, every jurisdiction that's part of the redevelopment agency's sort of jurisdiction that is a taxing entity, which includes the school districts, the city, there's transit agencies, and I don't know the whole list. I don't know if we have a, I'll get a seat because it's sort of our taxes, you know, we're getting money back that used to go to the redevelopment agency, and we have a say in how the money gets dispersed. So that's the best I can do at trying to explain to the public what this committee is, and Member Dice has that on it. We could, I suppose, continue to appoint someone who's not on the Board as our representative. I don't know that it has to be a Board Member. But before we go there, let me see if there is interest among any members of the Board for sitting on the RDA Oversight Committee. Member Pats? No. Yeah, I similarly feel reluctant to take on an additional obligation. I would suggest maybe on this one, we explore whether we have the ability to continue to, you know, either appoint Member Dice, since she's got some expertise, or some other, seek some other person that we can appoint to represent the school district's interest. What do folks think of that suggestion? Member Pats?
I don't have a suggestion, I mean, you know, I know I don't have the time, and I think it's fine if you wanna appoint somebody outside.
Okay, why don't we table that then? So we've got Member Miriam on the Alameda County School Boards, Member Pats as the City Schools Co-Chair. We're leaving vacant the Housing Committee and the RDA Oversight, subject to further research on whether or not we can fill that with someone external to the Board. Any other public comment on any aspect of this item? Okay.
Can I have a-
Member Pats?
Sure, go ahead.
So the Superintendent Committees were on this list last year. Are you saying that they're not continuing, or we're just simply not talking about them this year?
All I, I believe I stated was that to avoid any potential confusion, as there seemed to have occurred this year, that any committees that I might create on my own would be things that are committees that I create, and then I'll follow up with Board Members based on background and expertise and when I need advice on my work.
Okay, so it was the latter, thank you.
Well, on that topic, the, you're correct, Superintendent Committees have traditionally been part of this discussion, and this discussion has been always about seeking volunteer assignments on committees created by entities other than this Board. And in my experience, on the two Superintendent, maybe three, communications and curriculum under Lindo and then Finance under Superintendent Rubio, those committees have functioned as Superintendent Committees. The Superintendents convene them or not, as they needed, saw fit, they set the agenda, they ran the meetings, and the purpose of the Committees were to help the Superintendent prepare items for presentation to the Board. The Committees are, as such, entirely legal, permissible, and necessary if the Superintendent thinks he needs them, and that's how they function. I agree with Superintendent that some confusion has been created about them. They're not Board Committees, so we are not including them to further confusion in this Agenda Item. And in fact, I would suggest that we, to be perfectly clear, actually take action to say we are not creating any Board-created Committees tonight. And I would entertain a motion that we do that, to further solidify that point.
I'm sorry, but I think one of the challenges, and there is no confusion, I think, out there. I think it's a matter of you're trying to draw a bright line between these Committees. I think the question, the confusion to me is around if we wanna help the Superintendent do these things, I think that's a wonderful thing. I don't understand the need to do them in private. I, that's where I struggle, is we're, if the Superintendent wants to sit around and prepare Board Members for a Board Meeting, you know, to me, that's fine. We have all sorts of Committees, let's just do them in public. I think what you're trying to explicitly do here is say, oh no, these are absolutely not related to the Board, the Board Members are merely there by accident, you know. And I, while I think, you know, the law can be interpreted that way, I think I go to the spirit of it, which is, let's not spend any energy or time trying to say, nope, absolutely, we're not a part of these Committees, let's just make the Committees public, you know? We don't get a huge turnout of people, it's not as if we're gonna be flooded with people wanting to attend these Committees, but it does at least bring sunshine into the process. You know, I, again, if you feel the need to have Board Members there, I think the question is, if we empower Dr. Rubio to have standing Committees with a single area of discussion, like Finance, for example, by empowering him to do that, I think we, as a Board, are creating those Committees. I think that's an area of confusion. If we're gonna say, nope, we want no part of these, and, you know, Dr. Rubio, you're not empowered to create standing Committees with a single area of topic, if you, you know, then I think we have done something, but at this point, I don't think that saying, oh, nope, we have nothing to do with that, imploding ignorance, is not the right strategy, at least. It makes us look like we are continuing to try to hide something. And that's, when I say about trust, which you so eloquently brought up last time, it's that issue right there, the more effort we try to say, you know, don't look behind the curtain, what's going on back there is perfectly legal, instead of saying, hey, come on in, let's talk about it. What do you want us to do with your schools, what do you, how do you want us to spend your tax dollars? It just is, it just strikes me as we're bending over backwards, but, you know, particularly if those Committees continue to just meet, but now we're not saying, oh yeah, it's gonna be at six, you know, it's gonna be at five o'clock on Wednesday before the Board Meeting. So I know you're dying to jump in, so please do.
Member Pats, I just, just for clarification for yourself, I hope, and for the Board and for the public, I am not in any way asking the Board to authorize me to create any Committees tonight. I think that there are many meetings that we have that are open to the public, and such as our Board Meetings, our Partial Tax Meetings, our COC Meetings. And I, we always, you know, I think we can always improve in our communication and participation and outreach to the public, and I think we'll always make those efforts. I think, however, also, as I do my best to run the organization as a Superintendent, there are times when I need to have private meetings. All of my meetings are not in public. I've had people try to storm in and walk into my meetings unannounced. I had a member of the public, as you know, not that long ago, walk into a meeting of staff and cabinet, start eating the food and sit down. And so unfortunately, I don't think that all of my meetings need to be public, and I don't think it's the way that I would wanna run the organization. Now I would add, and I mean this politely, and I mean no offense, that I know that times there seems to be this kind of conspiracy theory out there, that whenever there's a closed meeting that I may be in, and if I have a Board Member in there, and I'm asking a Board Member for their thoughts on some policy, or on something, some, whether it's a project or a burning item I have, that, you know, that there might be this idea that, well, the Superintendent's behind the closed door, there must be something, you know, they must be up to something, and why isn't that in the public? And so I, I'm sorry if that, you know, feeds this sort of conspiracy theory, but in running in the organization, there are meetings that I feel like I need to have in private, and I very much appreciate the, your expertise in special education, Member Athel's expertise in the law, Member Miriam's expertise in architecture, Miss, Member Ash's expertise in history and the, and being a Board Member here. So there are times when I may need to call on each of you individually, and I, and sometimes it helps me when those meetings are in person, and again, I'm sorry if it sort of feeds this idea that, you know, we're up to something else, but I think we're doing our best, and I'm doing my best to run the organization appropriately and professionally.
I think you're confusing what I was saying with staff meetings. I think staff meetings are perfectly appropriate and the place to have closed doors meetings. Those are not the meetings I'm talking about. I'm talking about organizing meetings with two Board Members on a regular and continuing basis. I don't know that I was unclear on that, but I will be clear, those are the type of meetings that I'm speaking of. And the idea that you can get expertise from Members on these, on this Board, although I would question some of the expertise you've gotten from Members on these Board, is one thing, but I think having to have a meeting on an ongoing basis is a completely different issue. And we're not talking apples and oranges, and I think if you wanna have meetings, have meetings. You know, I don't keep your calendar, and I think if you meet with your staff, you meet with your staff. That is not the type of meeting I'm saying drag into the public. I'm simply saying when you wanna organize things, and I think at this point, it is clear we have a pattern, and what I hear you and Athel saying is not we're gonna change the pattern, but we're gonna change about how we talk about the pattern, and that's where I'm given pause.
My question is, what is in the best interest of the District and how it's gonna function? And what I hear you proposing is, and the Superintendent's gonna prepare for anything that goes out in public, and what I hear you proposing is to have duplicative meetings, to have him prepare and think ahead of time, and then have a committee meeting that's publicly noticed and out in public of a subset of the Board. Why, I don't know, because they're not gonna decide anything, and then have the same meeting reoccur in public with the full Board. That's not a good, if he wants to do that, he can, but what I'm hearing him say is, that's not gonna use his time, it's not a good use of my time to come to two meetings that are exactly the same thing. The Superintendent's, it's not nefarious, it's not, it's not only an interpretation law, it is completely protected by the Brown Act, by the Public Records Act and every other Freedom of Information thing I know, for an agency head to have and engage in a deliberative process with whomever he wants, including two Board Members, as long as it's not a quorum. As long as it's not a quorum, two Board Members can go and talk to anyone, the Superintendent, an individual Member of the public, a group of people, and it's, and there's nothing wrong with that. And so I guess what I resent is the suggestion that we create extra work so that you can try to make a political point, which is not really functionally serving the needs of the District. Whatever the Superintendent is gonna come up with in the meetings that he wants to have are going to be things that come to the full Board and are presented in public. And does the law and the Brown Act and- and are presented in public. And, and does the law and the Brown Act and the courts recognize the necessity for a superintendent to brainstorm in private, to throw out crazy ideas, to throw out things that aren't ready for prime time? Absolutely, absolutely. And, yes. So, do we need duplicative meetings? No. And so, just to be clear, yeah, that's my position.
So, I think that maybe I'm not quite, let me, let me back through some of the things that you just said there. First of all, and I'm really impressed with your ability to become an expert on the Brown Act in the last two weeks. I just remember recently hearing you not quite grasping that, how the numbers work, so I'm impressed by your, doing your homework. Thank you for that. But I want to go back to what you're talking about. What I'm hearing you say is, he's going to convene two board members, or any number of, you know, one or two, as he deems appropriate, to spitball ideas and then come and present it to us as a group later on. And I would argue that that's not quite how things should work. I think my contention, again, is that we have these standing committees that have been ongoing for a long time of questionable legality. But going back to just the scenario you described, I actually find that more confusing, because he's taking a side and saying, hey, let's meet, let's caucus, let's get this plan between two board members, which is not a quorum, before we bring it for prime time. And really front-loading the conversation with those two board members, devising a strategy, and then bringing it to the whole board. And it almost feels to me like that's information we should be having simultaneously, not something that's carved off. I mean, that's the purpose. If you want to talk about things before you bring it to the full board, that's the whole point of a subcommittee, is that you have that time to spitball and brainstorm and do those ideas. And so, again, you know, I'm not going to sit here and argue with you on what is and what is not legal. I'm going to sit here and say, you know what, he's got a team, he's got a staff. We're pretty top-heavy in this district, so there is people he can work through these ideas with. It, you know, if he needs to ask a question of a board member, that's fine, but I think the idea of sitting and spitballing and bringing ideas forward, again, strikes to me of exactly the kind of thing we want to avoid doing. But, you know what, you're right. He can put together with other committee he wants, but I think you're going to keep running into these challenges and, and, you know, we're not bringing in trust to the community because we're not involving them in the process, you know. And that's a big challenge for me. So, you know, good luck to you on that.
Well, I, no surprise, disagree that people aren't being involved in the process, because that's what the public part of the meeting is. Member Ash?
Yeah, I just, and I apologize, I came in late to the discussion, so I'm playing catch-up. But, just listening to the last couple comments, I'd just like to say that, at least personally, I see the board's role as, obviously, we wear many hats, but one of them is to support the superintendent. And if he or she in the future, or having, needs to meet with a member or two of the board, as a sounding board, to get advice and to discuss things that aren't quite ready to be discussed in public, I think that is not only appropriate, but, but a smart management tool. So, I don't see anything wrong with it, and, yeah.
Member Marion, any comment?
So, Member Ash, while you're out of the room, I suggested that, just to be perfectly clear, we have a motion that the board is not creating any committees of any sort tonight.
So, we're making a motion that we're not doing anything?
Yes. Is that, did I hear you making that motion?
Um, no.
I heard okay.
I mean, I understand it, is what I was saying there. Understandable.
Okay.
That's what's on the floor.
Well, I would make that motion. Do we have a second?
Some motion, some movement.
Is there any public comment on this item? Rodney Wong, please. Yeah, I'd come up to the mic.
Coming in late, I wasn't able to catch, catch the entire discussion, but I believe the board members, new and old, are all trying to work toward the same goal of the standards that the, that is expected by the citizens, taxpayers, students, teachers, and community in general. What, I see that you're going through some similar things that the COC was going through, as far as reorganization and finding leadership going forward. And I know that there is enough horsepower here on the board and in the community that would like to see positive steps going forward, whether it's at this time of the year to show, get community input and discussion on the various topics and responsibility of management, administration, and that type of subject. January, you know, is, is this some, a subject that can be put into a working group type of session that could discuss and hammer out, put everything on the table, about what is important and what's needed to plan for what positive steps going forward in the future? The school district and the community is looking forward to the next 12 to 18 months of a lot of positive things to occur, facility-wise, academics, teaching, management, leadership. And if, and I know the community is very interested in all those subjects, from the past years, the board meetings that I've attended, and the, this is the first time I've seen so few people here from the public at a board meeting. I'm sure they want, there are members out there that want to comment. And to do it in a forum, starting the first, we're going to have a COC meeting, according to John, in the gym, first week in January, the first time. We're going to, we're going to have a good public showing there. And why not have the board there? And this, have issues on that agenda that the board can bring up before the whole community. I expect at least 30 people, 30, 30, in, in, in attendance. And if you're looking for an opportunity to show the community what the board does, who the board is, and what positions you have, and what challenges you have in the future, I think that's a golden opportunity. So, think about that. If these issues that you're talking about tonight, I came here for the audit report, but I said, you know, I've been pushing the January meeting. John, is it the first Wednesday night, 5:30, in Jan, January, in the gym? Something we all look forward to. So, I leave it up to you to possibly consider that. Are the things here something that you want public input from? You know, each of you? Or can this be done at, you know, another, another session?
Okay. Thank you for your comment, and for that update. Any other public comment? All right. Any further discussion on the pending motion?
So, I go back to my earlier comment. We have a motion saying we didn't do anything. Am I interpreting this correctly?
Yes. There's a motion that we are clarifying, that we're taking no action to create any board committees.
Why do we need a motion and a vote to clarify that we didn't do anything?
Excuse me, just to clarify. Member Patz is speaking in the past tense, I believe, if I, if I'm hearing you correctly. You keep saying we didn't do, or am I misinterpreting? I, I can't, I'm not sure to take you literally or not right now.
The motion covers any actions we've taken tonight with respect to our reorganization.
So, again, I'm, I'm, you know, you made the motion, so I'm asking, why are we, I mean, can we also make a motion and vote that we didn't spend $10 million? I mean...
You could. See if you get a second. But you have raised issues, and we're being crystal clear that we are not creating any board committees. And there's a reason for that motion, and you have helped raise issues, which you're perfectly entitled to do. Any further discussion on?
So, can I, yeah, I, um, okay. I, great.
Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Abstain.
President Athel?
Yes.
Okay, that moves us into the rest of the discussion items, the first of which is 10.2, the annual auditor's report.
Yes, good evening. Again, the purpose of this item is to secure the board's review and acceptance of the 2015 independent audit report. Very happy to have, and I hope I don't say your last name wrong, Levitt, is that Mr. Levitt? Mr. Ben Levitt, from the auditing firm of, I'll probably get this one wrong, Costellius Wilson Dominguez Levitt, CWDL?
Close enough.
Close enough.
CWDL, yeah, it's a mouthful.
And I just, before you begin, I just want to, again, tell you in front of the board, thank you for all your work. We've been, I've been very pleased with the, I'd say, the rigor I've seen in your firm compared to the last firm that we have, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rubio. Members of the board, good evening. This is our first year under contract with the district. We're very happy to be working with Emory Unified School District. I'm, sure. Let me know if that is any better. Okay, good. So, I'm going to take kind of a high-level perspective, walk through both reports, first the district, then the bond report. I'm going to focus in the district on kind of the core financial statements, because there's been a change in accounting principle in this current year under audit. And then on both reports, on the findings and question costs, in a little bit more detail than the other sections. And then at the end, I'll open for questions that you might have, or that members of the public might have, if you so grant, on either report, whether something contained within the documents or on our procedures in conducting the audits. So, to start with the district audit report, on page one, we've got the independent auditor's report, which is our most kind of prime opinion over the district's financials. This is where we're expressing an opinion on the fairness of the presentation of the financial statements. And we state on page two, in the opinion section, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the district as of June 30, 2015, and the respective changes in financial position thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." That is to say, the opinion is unmodified, the highest quality opinion an auditor is able to render over a district's financials. So, when we go into, in the kind of subsequent sections, the detail over that financial information, it's at this point in the report where we express our opinion that those financials are fairly stated and they can be relied upon. The section following that is the MDNA, which covers management's kind of discussion and analytical information, looking at the current year relative to the prior year. The next section, beginning on page number 11, is the first page in the core financials. And normally, I would approach this at a higher level, but I want to call your attention to page 12. It's, it's a little small, that chart. It's a lot of information on one page. Toward the bottom, where you see, starting change in net position, then net position beginning, and then prior period adjustment. To focus on that prior period adjustment, see note 11, that negative $8.65 million. I want to emphasize that in the current year, because this is related to a really major accounting pronouncement change that happened this year, and I want for you to have enough information to be comfortable with it. If you get questions from the community, or if you'd just like for your own information, to have kind of a sense of what that negative $8.6 million represents. Typically, a beginning balance adjustment is done to correct something that was mistakenly presented in the prior year. In this case, that is not the issue. It's a change in accounting principle. What the change is showing is a change in recognition of a pension liability relating to all employees that fall under, in California, CalPERS and CalSTRS. So, every district throughout the state is advanced recognizing, as part of a national change, a new national standard, all of those liabilities projected forward for all district employees. Now, what this means for this district is a huge hit to net position, but I just want to emphasize, thanks to some very conservative and prudent fiscal practices, a positive ending net position. I was just at a client last week where the change, the prior period adjustment change there resulted in a $30 million adjustment down, and with the net position they had going in, and their very minor positive change in activities from year to year, resulted in a net negative roughly $30 million net position going forward, which, in the government-wide financials, which are not the fund financials, is not to say the district is in any risk for them, but is to say, in a district like Emory, where on your government-wide, your long-term financials, you're in the black, you're in a very good position relative to a lot of different agencies throughout the state. So, I just wanted to highlight that, that based on that change, this district, relative to a lot of our other clients, is in a very sound spot.
Can you just clarify the, the change in the, in the accounting practice?
Yeah.
Was to, to recognize earlier somehow pension liabilities?
Absolutely. So...
And how did that come about?
The impetus for all this kind of came from scandals like the pension crisis that hit General Motors and things like it, that got a lot of accountants thinking, we have to find a way to recognize these, these, these pending issues, these looming costs, and we need to clarify them and make them just more visible to people that can make decisions based upon this information, the prime stakeholders such as yourselves. So, governmental pensions, for a long time, loomed large, but in fairly vague terms. CalPERS and CalSTRS essentially attaches a large ending retirement dollar amount to every district, or virtually every district employee that falls under those two plans. But until the 14, 15 fiscal year, there hadn't been the requirement for those two statewide agencies to get audited and provide that detail, that actuarial detail, to every member district, which is what happened in the current year. They were required to get audited, and they did. They sent that information, as they had to, to every district in the state, not just K-12 districts, also community college districts, any kind of agency with employees that fell under their banners. And then from there, the requirement means that agencies such as Emory need to, in your financial reporting, present that information, not just in that section in the core financials where you show the overall impact of the change, but also in a more detailed pension footnote, which goes into some pretty excruciating detail, on both sides, on the CalPERS and the CalSTRS side. And one thing that's actually kind of interesting, if we went to that, which is going to be in the notes to the financials, starting on page, it's going to begin on page number 41, where in note eight, pension plans, it starts talking about CalPERS, and then it goes into CalSTRS, is not just the fact that there's a lot of granular detail related to this big number that we're looking at much more precisely now than ever before, but the fact that this precise vision is really still an estimate. We're projecting our actuaries that were hired at the state level. We're projecting our actuaries that were hired at the state level are projecting each district's proportionate share. And it's really based upon a lot of factors, significant among which is how much money all these contributed funds are going to be earning between now and when these employees actually begin retiring for real. So when we look at, and there's a sensitivity analysis required on both sides in this footnote, for instance, on page 45, we show for CalPERS, and at the bottom of the page, you'll see that sensitivity analysis, just how much that liability varies depending upon how well those funds do. So the middle rate, 1.666 million, is what's baked in along with CalSTRS and some other components into that, that net position change. But for instance, if those funds were to earn 1% less, 6.5 rather than 7.5%, that liability would dramatically shift up. And by the same point, if the funds did better, the return on investment was higher by 1%, the liability would go down to 616,000 for this portion of it. So just to show that the eight or so million that's being adjusted into net position is right now the best understanding that we have looking forward. But it's an understanding that, starting with this year and going forward, is going to be continually improved upon as we get closer and closer to that looming cost, as we can see better into what our actuals are actually generating for these funds under investment at the state level. So a lot of new information, this is all something that was not in Emory's prior report or in any district's prior year report, but something that I think, at least at this district, you can kind of look at and be a little bit proud based upon the fact that you're so far in the black on the government-wide financials.
And why do you think it is that, unlike some other districts, we are so far in the black? What have we been doing right?
That becomes a real complex question and answer because districts have different priorities that are dictated at so many levels, based on local needs and kind of where districts are. I wouldn't go so far as to say that just because the district that I presented at last week is down by 30 million on the government-wide, means that they're not doing things well. It just means that this should be a much more alarming footnote for them. It means that in the coming years, when they're making their CalPERS and their CalSTRS contributions, they need to recognize that right now, essentially, that money is resulting in a huge negative unrestricted net position, and that that's got to come from somewhere. So priorities will need to shift. It doesn't mean the things they've been doing are not good things, but it means that in coming years, a lot has to change from the way they've been practicing. Whereas here, you've got a lot better of a financial standing based upon this huge impact coming through.
That's helpful.
Of course, that's from an accountant's perspective. We tend to see things denominated in dollars. There's a lot more going on, but.
Another question for you on the 8.6 million is, is there any way you can tell us today whether that number is likely to bloom or balloon significantly? I know that our, every district's share of STIRS and PERS is increasing exponentially due to legislation passed last year, 2014. Our, you know, share is going up. And so I don't know if that somehow relates to this number, and it means our exposure going forward will also be ballooning the same way that our, you know, bi-monthly pay obligation is ballooning.
You're absolutely right. The raw dollar amount of contributions in coming years is going to go up. It's going to be a higher percentage of total payroll expense that's going to be contributed. But when the actuaries that were working for CalPERS and CalSTRS at the state level put together the numbers that we essentially just took and baked into the district's financial statement, they factored in those increases drawn out as far as they could project.
Okay.
So based on, at least where we're standing right now, this is the best available information on kind of how that liability sits, how that impact sits. And as the financials are brought forward year after year, that number is going to continue to become more and more precise.
Got it. So will change, but you've already, to the best extent you can, factored in the ballooning.
People much smarter than me have done that factoring, yeah.
All right, thanks, that's helpful. Go ahead.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I have one more question, I'm sorry. Mr. Levitt, just out of curiosity, I'm kind of curious. The 12 million subtotals, what's really helping us on this particular page, page 12? And I'm noticing that what makes up that 12 million are property taxes levied for general purposes, but also property taxes levied for debt service? Is that specifically levied for debt service? I'm just kind of curious, are some of these property taxes here, this is the source of that maybe? Like our bond, previous bonds, or?
Yes. On the government-wide financials, unlike the budgetary, fund-based financials, we're looking at everything. We're looking at capital assets, long-term debt, and all the items related to that, including the bond activity, bond revenue sources and expenditures.
The reason I'm asking is because, you know, we're certainly fortunate to have such great citizens in Emeryville who keep supporting the district and have voted for bonds. But I just was wondering, since that money is specifically for something targeted, while it helps us look at here on paper on the math, is it an effect, since it's not money that's general or unrestricted, is it really helping us in reality at the end of the day or down the road if things go more squarely on the 8 million dollar?
What I would say to that point, I think it's a good question, is that every one of those bond dollars that's coming in is ultimately going to be offset by a bond expenditure, if not now, at some point in time. So I would think that that activity would fairly well kind of neutralize itself and help focus on some of the other ways that the district is spending money and then earning revenues based upon different funding sources. Because you're right, this is bringing into consideration a lot of different, all sources of funding, at this, state, federal, local, and local certainly includes the bond funds.
Okay, all right. I'm just curious, because I know it helps us with the math on this page, but I just was unsure in reality down the road, if something, if the benefit situations, or this number again goes poorly. And I guess the 8 million represents an actual amount of money that the district has set aside? And is that, do I consider that as some type of fund for OPEB or other kind?
It's probably set aside as much as social security could be called set aside. It's the best estimate that we have on the total impact that those pensions are going to affect the district by.
Okay.
And the district is making contributions toward that amount.
I see. Okay.
But yeah, kind of looking at, it's a very high-level kind of aggregate picture of everything that's happening with the district. And just to kind of recap real briefly on your point about the bonds and the funds coming in from taxes related to the bonds, I've been to clients where they'll be in a severe negative position with taxes related to bond funds. There's many districts that have elections and receive taxes for that reason, such as the district I was at, which is relatively local to here, last week. And even with that, even with that source of revenue, they, based upon different fiscal practices that they've chosen, different decisions in a wide range of kind of latitude, they've been in a very different position than this district is currently sitting in.
I appreciate it. We're making a lot of effort on the financial side, not to be top-heavy. We're down to the bone really at the district office, in my opinion, so I appreciate you sharing that. Thank you.
Sure, yeah, just to give it a little context. So after the core financials, we touched briefly on the notes to the financials. That is what is going to give a little bit more detail on each of the balances contained with the core and some information on the district's capital assets and long-term debt. One thing I just want to point out real quick on long-term debt was a change, we always like kind of focusing on year-over-year changes. That is going to be on the page 34, where we summarize in a schedule, long-term debt, and we show that the, it was, let me get the name right, the City of Emeryville loan, which had been carrying at a balance of $1,500,000, has been forgiven. So you'll note that in the current year, debt is going down by that amount of money related to a memorandum of understanding between the district and the City of Emeryville, whereby the city is forgiving that debt as part of taking partial ownership of that new facility, the ECL. And then corresponding with that, in capital assets, which is going to be on the preceding page, which is going to be on page 33, we show that same amount of debt that's being taken off related to that forgiveness. That's the $1,500,000 less, the current year, $37,500 payment, being taken out of construction-in-progress additions relating to the city's ownership of that portion of the ECL. So just reflecting kind of the two sides of that transaction, for that debt and that related asset to come off, based upon that relationship the district has with the City of Emeryville. And then moving past the notes to the financials, we get into the supplementary and the required supplementary information. That begins on page 53. This is going to give information that's required to be presented in district financial statements, everything from schedules of federal expenditures to organizational chart information. And then moving past that, we get to our other auditor's reports. Starting on page 69, there's three additional auditor's reports, and they give information, or they enable us to express our opinion on different aspects of our testing. The first one looks over internal controls and compliance. The next is our opinion over federal testing. And the report after that, on page 73, is our opinion over state compliance, based on all of our state compliance procedural testing. And we note exceptions in the report over internal control as finding 2015-1, which I'll get to in just a moment, and on state compliance as finding 2015-2. But having said that, with those exceptions, otherwise, the district is in full compliance. It's in full compliance on the federal side in entirety based upon our testing. And just to give a little context to those two findings, they fall under the category of significant deficiencies, which is a notch below a material weakness. So of the two categories that we could place them in, they're in the less concerning of the two. And so now, just to zero in on that real quick, in the prior year, there were no findings in the district's financial statements, so both of these are new in the current year. Finding 2015-1 concerns cash disbursements. This was a significant deficiency over internal control. And what we're noting here.
Is there a page you're looking at?
Oh, yeah, sorry, page number 77, for the first finding 2015-1. What we're noting here is that in 13 of 65 disbursements that we tested during the district audit, we noted that they had a purchase order dated after the invoice date. And the significance of that is really just looking at the chain of approval and looking to see that all disbursements are properly approved and encumbered in advance of when they're essentially obligated to the vendor. So we take the purchase order, sorry, the invoice date as that date generally at which the funds, the purchase has been, the goods have been ordered, or the service has been provided or rendered. And the funds are obligated. And we would expect, based upon best practices, that in advance of that, the approval has already been made for that purchase of whatever it should have been, and that those funds are encumbered in the system so that that can take place. And in 13 of 65 disbursements, we noted that that did not follow that sequence. It's certainly not the highest exception rate that we've seen. This is a difficult area that requires a lot of kind of wrangling down because it really concerns centralization. And how many departments have the authority to initiate purchases? And are they being centralized? Are they being kind of tightened together enough so that the district's business office can manage that properly? One challenge here is that your CBO is also serving the role of director/supervisor over financial services, which is unusual and definitely puts a lot of strain on the business office to be able to kind of work through and control the disbursements going out. So our recommendation, simply that the area be considered and looked at by the district, and that a procedure be placed into effect to ensure that all disbursements are properly approved and encumbered in advance of the funds being obligated. And then on the state side, short-term independent study, pretty minor comment, to be frank. Two of five contracts that we tested fell for under the minimum five-day length that those contracts are required to have. As a result, the contracts were invalid. I think that there may have been just a little bit of confusion or clerical error at the site level, something that they definitely have a sense of now. That if there is going to be a leave, if a student's out for less than five days, that would not be eligible for a short-term independent study. The related ADA to be backed out from that, very minor, a .03 ADA, which extends out to about $188. So something that, based upon materiality from a financial perspective, would certainly not have any impact on these statements. But since compliance is black and white, we're still required to present that for your attention. And we're satisfied, based upon our recommendation and the district's response, that this will not be a concern going forward. Something that we'll certainly be looking at in future years, though. So that concludes the district's financial report. I'll jump into the Measure J bond report now. Again, take it at a high level, and then open for any questions on either reports. So in Measure J, on page one, we have kind of a summary of the issuances and some of the history behind the Measure J ballot election. The next page, we've got the composition of the COC as of the audit report date. And then our independent auditor's report on page three. And here, similarly, we express an unqualified opinion over the Measure J bond financials, which is the best opinion that we are able to render, which essentially states, we believe these numbers, these financials can be relied upon. And then going into the financial section, on pages five and six, we present the core financials showing the position of Measure J as of June 30, 2015. On page seven, we start into the notes for Measure J that are going to give more detail on each of those balances contained within the core financials. And then, starting on page 14, we have two additional reports. On page 14, the report over internal control and compliance is looking at really the same things we were looking at on the district side, which is our controls in place to be able to maintain operations and be able to control operations effectively. And we note one comment as comment 2015-1, which I will cover in just a moment. And then our second report is the more unique of the two, the independent auditor's report on performance. And this is where we really go beyond just looking at standard best practices, standard accounting procedures related to school districts, and zero in on the expenditures spent under Measure J and whether they are allowable based upon the ballot language. And we go into a little bit of detail over our testing procedures in this report. I believe on page, it's number 18, where we cover the sample that we had, a sample totaling $8.879 million, or 43% of total expenditures incurred during the 14, 15 fiscal year, along with tests over the COC, for the membership of the COC, tests over bid procedures, tests over change orders, among other things. And ultimately, we determined, as a result of this performance report, that the district is in compliance, that the Measure J program is in compliance with the provisions laid out in its ballot language. And we express an unqualified opinion over that performance report. Finding 2015-1, cash disbursements really echoes the same concern we had on the district side. These were six of 40 Measure J disbursements, where we are not stating we have any concerns over their allowability pertaining to the ballot language, simply that that process, that best practice, approval and encumbrance in advance of the obligation of the funds, was not in place for these six of 40. And we would recommend that the district find a way, whether that be taking a look at staffing, whether that be taking a look at policies and procedures, to ensure that every single disbursement that's made is ultimately approved and encumbered in advance of being obligated to a vendor. And with that, I will open for any questions that you might have over either report or our procedures. our procedures in conducting the audits.
I just had a quick question.
Yes.
I might like, if you don't mind, if you can give me a call in the beginning of next week-
Sure.
-if you're around. I wouldn't mind kicking around this last one with you a little bit. I know part of the issue is, you know, we have the construction firm, which has a contract and a certain amount of money, and that they're, they have subcontractors and bids that have gone out and bids that are awarded, and those eventually make their way or eventually get billed and finally get to the accountant who works part-time with Swinburne's in here.
Mm-hmm.
And at that point, the, everything's been billed, the invoice dates are-
Yeah.
...what they are, and finally it gets to her. And so I might like to kick a couple of these around with you, just to brainstorm some ideas of how we can improve that.
Be happy to.
It's an interesting scenario, so I'm trying to figure-
Interesting and challenging. I'll grant that it's a very difficult section to have zero exceptions.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Levitt? Do we have any public comment on this item? Rodney, you got to come up again.
Just quickly going to page two there, the makeup of the-
Which, you're on the Measure J.
Measure J, yeah. Of the makeup of the members of the C O C, I learned here that, let's see, it was corrected.
Yes.
It was corrected.
We had received comment in advance upon his statement, and we appreciate it. We amend that.
Great. I thought I had a lost child out there that was committed to me, so.
My apologies for the earlier exception.
All right, so the membership is correct, Mr. Wong is telling us. All right, excellent. Any other public comments? Okay, well, Mr. Levitt, thank you for your time and energy on this.
Of course.
You know, I can, it's obvious from your reports and your presentation that you guys are sticklers and you're looking to, you know, black and white, a hundred percent compliance. And so I appreciate your pointing out the areas, the few areas that we need to improve on, but pointing them out to us. And also just presenting to us and the public a fair picture of the finances, and it's helpful for the board to know, because we just see the numbers too, right? I mean, we're working on the faith that the procedures are in place and that the numbers are accurate and meaningful. So you fulfill a very important function for us to know that the district is in, we can trust the numbers that we see in front of us and that the public can trust them as well, so thank you.
Thank you for engaging our firm. We really appreciate the confidence that you've placed in us.
Okay, I think Mr. Wong has one more public comment. Please come on up and add that as well.
Just getting the gist of the conversation here, your firm has been on the job, I guess, for twelve months, eighteen months with this unique Measure J and the E C C L project. Now that I look forward to the next twelve to twenty-four months when the E C C L is going to be completely completed, constructed, and in operation, do you see any challenges with the various stakeholders that are involved in the E C C L operations in showing an audit, you know, next year at this time, on getting, you know, looking into your crystal ball?
I'm not sure by entirely if there's that question. Challenges with respect to finalizing the construction of the E C C L, challenges related to the operations once it's finalized?
I'm sorry, Ben, Mr. Levitt, if you're not in the microphone, then the camera doesn't pick it up. So Mr. Wong, may he ask that on there at the podium?
All right.
Maybe he can ask. Mr. Levitt, could you ask the question again if you don't mind?
Sure, yeah, just to maybe better understand the question, if you could clarify, please.
Yeah. The report, I know on the Measure J, it's just on the construction of the project. Now, but for the school district report, it covers both operations. And also, do you foresee any challenges for your firm going forward on reporting?
The most important- Sorry. I would say the most important thing to an external auditor with respect to operations is that they're accurately reflected by the financial information that we come to audit. So what our expectation would be is that that information hold up to testing, hold up to scrutiny. So when we look at a district in the context of a bunch of numbers, in the context of a bunch of expenditures, whether for payroll, whether for equipment, whether for construction, we're going to expect that everything the district is telling us through those numbers they've done, that we see support for, that we're able to validate. By the same token, with compliance, for instance, with construction, there's a lot of compliance that's attached to that. We're going to look not just at the numbers, but to make sure that the district is in full compliance with all of the provisions outlined by California Constitution, outlined by Public Contract Code. So we definitely take the perspective of kind of coming in with an agenda, coming in, for instance, with state compliance, and I don't have the report with me right now, but in the state compliance opinion, we lay out, I want to say there's about fifteen different procedures that we look at each and every one in detail, first to see if it's applicable, and then to see if it is, if the district met that procedure. That same kind of guideline applies to federal testing. It applies to internal controls, where there we take a more industry-based approach. We get guidance from practitioners, standardized guidance related to auditors that serve governmental entities. And we run through tests assigned to people doing kind of the work that we do in this particular niche of accounting, of public auditing. And I would say, based upon, based upon all those things that we come in with, we're always going to make sure that the district meets those standards in any given year. So for a given year, there's certain things that we have to look for, and that can change. Next year, there could be changes over Prop thirty-nine, construction accounting, that mean we come in with additional procedures. Same thing will almost definitely happen on the state's side. We're going into fifteen sixteen, we, I can pretty much promise you, we'll have new procedures over state compliance. I don't know what those procedures are at this point, but once they're issued, and once we come out for our initial interim visit and then our year-end visit, I can assure you that we will test the district and all of our clients to the letter of those new provisions, if that answers your question.
Yes, like, it was, I was asking when coming here to this meeting, to make this a, you know, a forward-looking, progressive thought pattern, a strategy to have everybody lay out all the possible new items that come up, you know, for the new year, and that would affect this report, you know, if it's, the report's going to be double in size, maybe it'll be a little less, you know, that type of strategy to help this body here.
All right. We appreciate that sentiment, and we look forward to your continued service on the C O C and helping us think these things through, Mr. Wong. All right, we are on to the approval of the first interim report item. Superintendent?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Affleck, President Affleck, I think we need a vote on the last-
Oh, do we? Is this, we actually, this is an action item?
Historically, we have, the board has voted to accept the report, I think.
All right, well, then, then let's do it again. Do we have a motion to accept the auditor's report?
So moved.
Roll call.
Number Ash?
Yes.
Number Miriam?
Yes.
Number Patz?
Yes.
President Affleck?
Yes. Okay, we have an accepted auditor's report. Approval of the first interim report is the next item. Superintendent?
Yes, good evening. Item ten point three per A B, twelve hundred, the first interim projection indicates that the district will or will not be able to meet its financial obligations for the current fiscal year, as well as subsequent years or two years out. Given this and the information that is bringing brought forth to you this evening, staff is recommending and asking for your approval of the first interim report, and as positive certification is presented. Glad to have Doris Sue with us tonight to make her presentation. And Doris Sue, in advance of your presentation, let me just again say thank you for all your
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to look at the first interim budget. And help the board to adopt the right certification. And then on this slide, it's showing, it is showing three different classes of certification, positive, qualified, and negative. And before we really look at the first interim budget, I would like to emphasize again, the budget is a district plan for a school year with anticipated income and expenditures. It will be modified throughout the fiscal year. As the assumptions change, so do the numbers. So now, let's look at the income side on the fifteen sixteen first interim budget. On this slide, it is showing the different sources of income, the L C F F, the federal income, the other state income, local income, and the S A P A transferring. The total wearing you is ten point five million dollars. And expenditures, so we have certificated salaries, classified salaries, fringe benefits, books and supplies, contracts and services, indirect costs. So for the total expenditure, it is showing nine point nine million dollars. And then on the bottom of this slide, it is showing two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. That is the general fund contribution to the food services program. And the contributions to the categorical program, it comes to seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Fund balance, so the beginning fund balance for the school district, that carryover from the fourteen fifteen school year to fifteen sixteen is two point three eight nine million dollars. So after what you have from your differences on the period's line, now the ending fund balance on the first interim budget is going to be projected to be two point seven million dollars. And the four percent minimum required reserve is showing on the bottom of the slide, it is four hundred and seven thousand dollars. So now, we're going to look into a little bit more detail on the income side. So in here, I'm comparing the first interim with the adopted budget that we had back in June of two thousand fifteen. So you see on the last column, that is the increase and decrease on the different sources of the income. So basically, there is a total of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that increase in the income side. So the L C F F revise changes from the adopted budget compared to the first interim, the state A increase of twenty-two thousand, property taxes increase of a hundred and fifty thousand, E P A a decrease of a hundred and forty-six thousand, and the special ed property tax, a little increase of three thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars to come to a total of thirty thousand. So federal income, so these are the federal income changes that happening from the first interim, actually happening from the adopted budget to the first interim. So it's only a little change of over six thousand dollars. So the state side, so on this particular slide, it shows an increase of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars on the state income. So the first item is the one-time discretionary. During the adopted budget, we budgeted for six hundred and one dollars per A D A, and actually now it's only come to five hundred and twenty-nine per A D A. So there is an increase of about twenty-three thousand dollars. Lottery money, six thousand dollars more. Educator effectiveness, this is a one-time money given to a school district to be spent over free fiscal year from fifteen sixteen all the way to seventeen eighteen, in a total of seventy-seven thousand dollars. The special ed state mental health, three hundred and forty-four dollars increase. Another one-time categorical program grant that we receive is the career pathway for a total of sixty-two thousand dollars. Disturb on behalf, this is a new financial reporting requirement from the state on the pensions. We are required to report the state contribution on the pension on our book. The way that is reporting on our book is the state is requiring us to put in a journal entry to put in an income of, in this case, it's two hundred and fifty-four thousand on the income side, that's showing the state portion of their contribution on the stirs. And then at the same time, the state is requiring us to offset the income by putting in the expenditure of the same amount on the expenses side. So that means they offset each other. So actual, so we're not going to actually receive an additional two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, because this is just a requirement to meet the state new financial reporting.
Okay, can you stay on this slide? Because this is where I had a few questions.
Okay.
The, and thank you for that explanation. You just addressed one of them. Where did we get two hundred and fifty-four thousand for stirs? Basically, you're telling us, don't count that as real net again, look at the other figures on this page, in terms of what is a plus or minus over what we were thinking of in June.
That's right. So actually, the actual increase of funding, you should have the three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, the total, minus the two hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Yeah.
That will be the increase in the state income.
Right, which is not nothing. I mean, that's, you know, eighty, ninety, that well, not that when you take away the twenty-three, but that's helpful. The, I think you also answered my educator effectiveness question. I thought we had booked, because that educator effectiveness money from the state came out of, I think, that one-time discretionary, at least in the state's mind. They had some extra money under Prop ninety-eight, and it was going to be in this discretionary pot, they didn't know exactly how, and then later became shaped around educator effectiveness. So I was concerned that we actually had already booked that seventy-seven thousand, and that it wasn't really new, additional money.
In the-
But what you're saying is that, well, the one-time discretionary, which was six hundred and one, as you said, was actually less, as it turned out, and, but there was a new pot called educator effectiveness. And for us, for this three-year grant, but it's all kind of given to us this year, is that right? We're not going to see a seventy-seven next year, and seventy-seven in the year after. This is it for the whole three-year period going forward, yeah.
Is the one-time money given to us in fifteen sixteen?
Yeah, for three years out.
In the adopt- In the adopted budget, we put in the one-time discretionary, which is the $601 per ADA. But we did not put in the $77,000 on the educator effectiveness. But again, the, this particular one-time grant, the educator effectiveness, this grant is to be spent over in free fiscal years. But we need to put in a plan before we can start using the money. And it needs to be board-approved and in public hearing, too.
Yeah, it's quite similar to the Common Core Implementation Block Grant of a few, a year or two ago.
Yeah.
And do you know when that plan is due?
I will let Dr. Rubio answer that question on the plan.
I don't believe, and I was just reviewing the facts page now on the Department of Education site, that they have set a due date yet on the plans. They have set a, you know, due date on the expenditures regarding expending all funds by June 30th, 2018. But I will go ahead and get the information, email that to the board.
Okay. Secondly, the career pathway, $62,000, that was also sort of worked out right at the budget deadline in June by the state. And so I guess that is Superintendent Rubio, that's the amount that we will, in fact, we are applying for the career pathway funds and-
Actually, I can answer that question.
Okay.
We already set up the budget for the career pathway. The way I believe what, what we budgeted for from the direction of Lori Madonna, our curriculum director, we are going to spend some part of the money in conference, and then another major part actually is paying for a consulting contract to work on this grant at the site. So the budget has already set up in the book.
Yeah, I think-
So is this the old career pathway and not the new-
Yes.
-career, it's not called pathway anymore. It's got a different name, CTE.
There's another CTE, pending grant that we're partnering with Contra Costa Office of Education. That has not been submitted yet by Contra Costa. So this money is referring to the existing-
Oh, okay.
-career pathway money that funds a part of, a big portion of Mr. Evan Decker's two days a week-
Got it.
-helping the high school.
So do you have any idea how much we might be entitled? Because it's formulaic.
Yes.
And it also is pretty automatic. If you, we apply for the new career pathway money, we are, we are going to get it, it seems, from the way that the state is flushing it out as fast as they can.
I can tell you that currently, a portion of Mr. Alvin Burns's salary is paid by Contra Costa Office of Education for his, to reimburse the district for his two classes that are considered still as ROP classes. The plan before this grant opportunity was that Contra Costa County Office of Ed was going to be reducing, as it already has, and reducing and reducing the money it was going to be passing toward the district. What the grant will do for, so yes, to answer your question, I don't know the, the number off the top of my head, but the, if awarded the grant, instead of reducing their funding for their, the portion of, I believe it's the .4 of his FTE that they currently partially cover, they would fully cover those two, that .4 FTE going out three years. And so that would be the change for us. It is based on, I believe, the number of seventh through 12th grade students, I think. So it's not a significant amount of money, but it would be helpful in terms of the current amount of funding they provide. They would, I believe, the consortium grant plan by Contra Costa Office also includes some additional staffing to help the districts, but we wouldn't see any other direct money, I think, besides the full funding possibly of Mr. Burns's .4 FTE.
Okay. So it sounds like that might be a maintain, kind of where we're at now, not necessarily a net increase.
That's right. And it would be a reversal of their plan going out, similar to the bits of plan of reducing, reducing.
So we're, we're not losing where we thought we would be losing.
That's correct.
All right.
Okay, those were my questions on this page. Thank you.
So on this slide, we are looking into the local income. The unrestricted local income, we have an increase of $27,000. Restricted local income, an increase of $13,000. Special ed SALPA, $9,960. So it comes to a total of $50,000. Most of them are actually, a major part of the donation is actually coming from the garden grant that we received for $20,000. So that's an additional local income that we receive in 1516. So after all the update, the expenditures are increased by $201,000. And on this slide, it gives you the breakdown detail of the $201,000. So any question on this particular breakdown before I go to the next slide?
Yes, I did, actually. So first of all, the decrease of $60,000 in certificated salaries, where's that coming from?
Okay, the decrease of the $60,000 from the certificated salaries is mainly to do with the two vacancy we have. One is over at NEAs. We, right now, we have a sub-teacher that teaching art at NEAs versus a permanent FTE teacher. And then the second position that we are looking into is the, the one at the high school. This is the second science teacher that didn't work out. So right now, I believe we are having Carol is doing part of the FTE.
Dr. Carol Balf, yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
So that's the major reason for the decrease of the $60,000 in the certificated salary. And for the classified salary, the increase of the $44,000 is mainly because we are now receiving additional local grant, like the garden donation that I mentioned before, that allowing to put in more classified support hours. That's the reason why for the $44,000 increase in the classified salaries.
And the benefits increase?
Remember, we kind of talked about the stirs on behalf when we look at the income side? So we are increasing $254,000 on the income side under the state wearing you. And then the offset is an increase of the $254,000 on the medical fringe benefit side, which is making up the increase of this $109. So if you really go take out the $254,000 from the $109,000 that's it shows on this slide, actually, instead of an increase in the medical benefits or the employee benefits, we are actually having a decrease in the fringe benefits.
Of about $150,000?
Yes.
So, so the $254 isn't shown here as an offset because we're not showing the other, because it just, it actually worked out better. We actually had a decrease in benefits in reality, I think, is it right, correct?
That's right. And then the increase of the $44,000 in the contract is mostly to do with the contract that we signed up with Alvin Decker to do the career pathway. So that makes the total of $201,000, an increase in the general fund expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
And on this slide, I want you to cross out the encouagement and use the word contributions instead of encouagement on this slide. So this slide pretty well shows you the two programs that require the general fund support. One is the special ed, $552,000. And then the other one is the ongoing maintenance, $190,000. That makes up a total of $742,000. And for your information during adopted budget, the contributions to special ed is $597,000. And the contributions to the ongoing maintenance during adopted budget is $306,000, for a total of $903,000 during adopted budget. But right now, this number is now decreased to $742,000.
Those are pretty big changes. What, what can we do to save that much between June and now?
The big change is come to the, the ongoing maintenance from 300, what did I say? From $306,000 to $190,000. Because right now, I find it out with our size of the ADA, we are exempt from the minimum contribution of 3%. That's the reason why you see a big drop in the contributions to the ongoing maintenance.
So what's the $190,000 based on, if not 3%?
The 3%-
Is that someone's judgment that that's what we think we'll need for the year, or?
Actually, the $190,000 is actually the operating budget for the first interim as of October 31st. That's the, that's the working budget that required by the maintenance department versus the $306,000 back in the adopted budget is the 3% required minimum.
Got it. And special ed went down a little bit? Is that because some of the changes that we've been making, for example, doing more preschool at Ralph Hawley, or educating more people in the district instead of transportation, or is that not something you don't know?
Well, the, the special ed was, in this case, was decreased by $40,000 compared to the adopted budget. I think it's mostly to do with the NPA. But now, the most recent news that I heard from Karen Steele, our special ed director, we might be spending more money to get the behavior aid. So I'm going to see, I'm expecting to see this number to be changed in the second interim. And instead of going down, I believe this number probably will go up. So we will see.
Okay.
Okay, now, we are looking at the multi-year projection. Again, this is only a summary version. The detailed one is part of, in your part of board package in the legal side's big Excel spreadsheet. So basically, on this multi-year projection, you will see we are having an operating surplus in 1516 of $348,000. But we're back in the deficit spending in the next two subsequent year. So we should continue to improve our program and monitor the enrollment. Any questions on this multi-year projection before I go on?
Just, this gets into some of the assumptions, but the, which were helpful in explaining the revenue decline. Just eyeballing it, that revenue goes from 10.5 to 10.1 to only recovers to 10.4 in 1718.
Well, the 10.5, where are you, the 10.5 million where are you in 1516 includes a lot of one-time money, like the one-time discretionary, like the one-time educator effectiveness, the one-time career pathway. So that's why you see a drop in 1617, because I'm assuming there is no more one-time in 1617. But at the same time, maybe it's a good idea, we can now look at the assumption sheet. There is another item in your board package. It listed the assumptions that we are taking in preparing this multi-year projection. And I want to point to your attention on the assumptions. The first page where it said unduplicated account, I have 74% in there. It should be 75.69%. So please correct that one on your page. And the 74, the 75.69% is a three-year rolling percentage. If you look at the single year-
Does that change your numbers at all?
Oh, it's just a typo on my assumptions.
Okay.
So it will not change-
But your numbers, your numbers up on the multi-year projections are based on the, the 75 point-
That's right. So the 75.69% is the three-year rolling percent. If you look at the 1516 single year, actually, the percentage comes to, close to 80% on the unduplicated account. But on the ADA, because at the time when I prepared the first interim, the ADA data wasn't available at that time. So I got fiscal year 1415 P2 over there. So hopefully, by the time when I do my second interim, I should be able to give you a better number on the ADA. And then the other item that I want to point to you is regarding the custodian salary and benefits to the RDA. This year, 1516, is the last year that we can able to move the custodian salary and benefit to the RDA Fund 25. And then the stirs and purse contribution rates, you can see it's going up every single year. Actually, the purse rate you will see from 11.6% all the way to 16.6% in 1718.
So on, on those first two points, and thank you for going right to those. Yeah, my, my question was, gee, I thought we are actually higher on, on the unduplicated account, and you're saying it's, it is close to 80%.
If you look at a single year.
Is that, is that LCFF required? I, I didn't realize this formula does a three-year average.
Uh huh.
So that's why. And I didn't realize that was part of their, the way the formula works.
Right, right, right.
So it's a good thing we started getting it out, but, you know.
So when, by the time we get to 1718, at least, our average will not be 74 anymore.
It should not be, as long as we continue to be rigorous about giving our-
Yeah, as long as we just stay at 80.
Free reduced lunch applications.
And then the ADA, yeah, that's based on last year's February P2 ADA, $641.
That's right.
Do you know what our ADA is now?
They are still-
With our, because we had the, the expanded TK class come in, and we added, at least at NEAs, we added ADA over where we were at last year. In the high school, we, we lost some ADA over where we're at. But overall, what, do you know what we're at now?
Actually, I just had a phone conversation with Eric, our attendance consultant, last week. They are still in the process of correcting some of the attendance data. So I don't have that number right now, even as of today. So hopefully, I will get something to the board, maybe email to you guys sometime next week before the holiday break.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. The second page on the assumptions, it listed the different funding that we projected in this year and also the two subsequent years. Again, you can see the one-time discretionary of $339,000, and the educator effectiveness, $77,000. But these are only in 1516. And then another thing that I want to point to you is regarding the supplemental and concentration. You will see, if we keep on the percentage that we have on our unduplicated account, we will see a jump in the supplemental and concentration funding from the $872,000 all the way to $1.1 million in 1718.
And that is based on the percentages on page one?
That is based on the-
The second line there?
That's right.
LCFF gap closed percentages?
So it's based on the unduplicated account at 540, which is with, right now, with the three-year rolling percent of 75.69%. But if we keep on this percentage, I mean, 540 unduplicated account, I'm looking in close to 80% by the time when we reach 1718. I'm looking in close to eighty percent by the time when we reach seventeen eighteen.
The per pupil amount that all these projections are based on are provided by Department of Finance? Is that where you're getting these? And is it, is this based on what point in time?
Where, where were you? Oh, you're looking at the ADA or what?
Just the base grant.
Oh.
And all the, you know, the different grade spans, et cetera, et cetera, all those, you know, basically numbers per pupil. Those dollar figures are based on a Department of Finance number from what point in time?
This is the most current number that they given out on the LCFF formula. So this is what they are recommending us and actually all school districts should base on these numbers when they do their LCFF.
Yeah, so it's my understanding, this is, this is their numbers from last summer when they get the budget. But already, the state is projecting higher revenues than were anticipated. And, you know, so I think the, I'm hearing there's gonna be an increase of about five hundred dollars per pupil. We'll know in a month or less. I mean, the governor is gonna come out with a budget projection and he's gonna underestimate, as is his practice.
Yeah, there will be a budget governor workshop in January. Hopefully, we will know more detail about this. But as far as these numbers are concerned, these are under the LCFF formula, the most current version.
Yeah, all right. It, it's just a placeholder comment really to say, let's, let's see if these numbers change come January and certainly come, you know, adoption by June.
Okay.
I think they will.
Okay, all right, that's good news.
Just based on tax revenues that the state's reporting. Okay?
All right. So this is just duplicating of what I said earlier, deficit spending in sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen. So this slide is going to show you actually the actual operating surplus or deficit for the school district. So for the first interim, the actual operating surplus for every school district is three hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
And that includes, I guess, does that include the two hundred and fifty-four thousand?
No.
That is offset by the two hundred and fifty-four thousand expense?
No, that was actually the actual surplus for the school district just based on income, incoming income minus our projected operating expenditures.
Okay, so it takes into account that that two hundred and fifty-four was, was canceled out by a two hundred and fifty-four expense?
Yeah, because.
And even doing that, we're still looking at about four hundred thousand over, breaking even.
That's right.
Four hundred thousand of surplus, okay? And we were projecting what again in, in June at our last adopted budget for surplus or deficit?
I don't have that number in hand.
Yeah, it wasn't that. It was either, I think it was maybe thirty thousand dollars or something in my mind.
Okay. I just don't have that number in hand right now with me right now. But that's a good thing, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand surplus that we have as of the October thirty first.
Yes, it's, it's very good news for this year, thank you.
So fun balance, so the multi-year projection is showing the district is able to meet the four percent required reserve in all three years. So staff is recommending the board to adopt the first interim report as presented.
Which shows us some positive certification.
That's right. So any more questions?
Any more questions for Ms. Su? Any public comment? Not seeing any further discussion. Do we have a motion to adopt the first interim?
So moved.
Second? I'll second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Su. That was a thorough report and shows a lot of work underneath it. The next item is our last discussion item, approval of gym naming task force applicants, superintendent?
Yes, good evening. The purposes of this item is to bring the names before the board. We had, for your consideration for the gym naming task force, we had tried different ways to outreach to parents and we had a mixed bag of results, but we did get parents who indicated online to a survey that they would be interested in being on a committee. We were not as successful in getting them to fill out a paper application. On the other hand, we had parents who did do an app, a paper application. So we thought we would bring all the names forward to the board to ask for your direction, how you would like us to proceed and whether or not you would like to go ahead and approve all the names on here for the task force committee.
Member Pats? I'm just, yeah, opening up for, for comment, thoughts on, on direction.
So who's gonna chair the committee and how are those meetings gonna be arranged? I mean, are there, it's taken a long time for us to get to this point. So if we have this group of people, I mean, I two, I see two city council members on there and a few other people, a few other names I recognize. So I'm, I, I guess my question is, if we approve this list, is it gonna just sit for another few months or? You know, because I guess I should not just have a question, but throw out the solution of, I'm happy to start organizing and chairing these committees, this committee. So I'm fine with this list of people.
And by this list, are you referring to the three applicants or everyone who's on this list?
Everyone who's on the list.
I guess the, yeah, I, I wouldn't be, I don't feel like a committee of three is enough or, or four even with your suggestion. So I like the, I like the expanded lists with the additional people, but it also seems we're not sure that they actually wanna serve on. Have you circled back and touched base with the online survey people?
We, we have not circled back. They indicate that they wanted to serve and they're willing, or they were willing to serve on the committee, but we have not touched, circled back with them.
So I guess I would recommend that as a, as a first step and, and because you want people who are gonna show up to meetings and, and give their input. And I would, would seek direction from the board of, is there a minimum size of the committee? And, and it may be in the bylaws. I do not, I mean, we, I know that you brought forward, Member Pats, the, the rules that we have on naming committees. And Ms. T. Marie, do you know?
When, when the board created this task force, they, they were looking for twelve, twelve people.
Because that was our, our, our hope or?
Yes.
But is that, is that?
There was nothing in the bylaws that guided.
There's nothing in the rules that say that it has to be any particular size? I, I thought I recall that we had some requirements or spots that we wanted to fill, people from different segments of the community or no? Maybe we just discussed doing that and didn't do it.
I think there was some recommendations of, of who we'd like to see on the committee as opposed to any hard fast you have to. I mean, I think if nothing else, the COC committee shows us that finding people to fit in each bracket can be a challenge. You know, we couldn't even find board members this evening. So I, I actually, you know, I, I'd like to see all of the people on the list attend, but at this point, I would like to just see some action happening. And so if we can get, you know, three people to attend, I think that's a win. You know, again, you asked for public comment, we're looking at it at empty chairs. So I think the fact that we have three and two of which are council members, which speaks volumes, I think, as far as getting us a name. And two of the three are also parents. So I think we have a good representative group, you know, and hopefully, we can get the others involved. But I think delaying, you know, this has been six months now, five months now. And the gym should be opening any month now.
Other thoughts? Well, I guess, uh, yes, I, I would like to suggest we go back and see who, who else is willing to serve on this committee. And I, I guess I'd like to see, I'm fine if Member Pats wants to be a, a board representative on it and appointed chair, I'd be willing to make that motion. But I would like to see, I guess, at least five or six people on the committee. And, and we, that doesn't, I wouldn't preclude us from, any of us from going out and telling people this application is out there still, but set a date by.
So we've gone out twice to get people. I'm just curious what makes you think something will be different this time?
Well, we have a list of people who've, who've said they, they wanna serve.
So why don't we just approve that list?
I think we're willing to do that, but if every single person on this says, no, I really don't wanna do it, and then we only have three people, I hear you saying you're comfortable. You think that's enough of a committee to, to go forward with.
You know, again, I think if we sat around and waited to get enough people on every committee, it'd be a challenge. I mean, you know, we had the COC report again this evening with vacancies. I think we've had vacancies on most of the committees. So, you know, it, it just seems to me at this point, we've tried, I think we can get, you know, it, 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 I think if we get this much of an applicant pool, expecting half of them to show up is not unrealistic, right?
I agree, I agree. Member Pats, if you don't mind me asking, if the board does appoint you to chair tonight of the committee, is there, it would be helpful for direction and next steps for me. Is there an approximate day evening, not specific date, but like, is it, would it be like a, in your mind, is it a Saturday afternoon? Or just so I can, when, when it'll help us and staff when we're doubling back to maybe be clear with people?
Well, I think I would poll the, the people who wanna participate and see what works best for them.
Okay.
You know, it, it would be.
I'll, we can do that.
Yeah, I just think that, I mean, if I were.
Based on your schedule, I wasn't sure based on your schedule, okay.
Yeah, no, I would, I would make it work for, you know, again, because I think, I don't disagree with Member Affeld. We want as many people as possible, but I think, again, we've beaten the bushes twice, so.
Got it, thank you, that's helpful.
So I'm, I'm wondering, trying to frame the motion in my mind, because this is the new wrinkle, which is you're, you're volunteering to step forward and chair it and looking at where we're at. So I guess the motion is to approve the individuals who are on this list as, to be on this committee subject to the superintendent going back and reaffirming with them that they're willing and able to do so. So that's one part of the motion. Another part is to allow new applicants, and this, this is sort of a part that can be rejected if people wanna reject it. But I would just allow new applicants to January fifth or something or, I don't know. You set the date in January, your first meeting, in case someone new does wanna step forward and these people don't wanna do it. And then the third part of the motion is to have Member Pats be the, the board representative and, and should we let the committee select the chair or do you wanna go in as a chair?
Oh, I think the committee should select the chair.
Okay, so Member Pats be a fourth member as the board representative. So that's a three-part motion, response.
I think the middle part, what if we allow any new people who wish to join, join and then give them, and then have them approved at the next possible board meeting? You know, so they could start participating in the process without having to wait for our board meeting and then we would bring them forward.
Okay, I accept that friendly amendment. Does that come with a second? Member Marion, seconds. The motion, discussion? Any public comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
May I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
The middle part then?
Yes.
So could you rephrase the middle part?
So the middle, uh, part of the motion, the second part of a three-part motion, is to allow other members, interested members of the public who have not yet identified themselves to step forward by?
You know what I?
No, no point in time?
I think, you know, anybody who wants to participate will happily have encouraged participation.
To step forward, subject to their, and they may immediately begin participating, subject to a subsequent board approval, probably by consent. Would be my guess. Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our discussion items, board reports or announcements. Any?
So I think this is just gonna be something I say at the end of our board meetings for a while. But I think it's particularly salient, given that this is the final board meeting of the year. Still no more discussion or follow-up on your Annie Yates task force and what we're gonna do with the future site. And I'm just gonna keep noting that an ongoing discussion was promised and, you know, we've had one discussion and no revised numbers, no update. But I am, I am happy to report that with the new budget outlook, our fears of not being able to afford it seem to be diminishing greatly, whether it's the proposed numbers or not. So again, I'm just gonna say this at the end of every board meeting until we finish that conversation because as far as I can tell, we are closing that site.
And we're continuing that conversation as promised and it'll be picked up in the new year. Any other board comments or announcements rather? All right, we are going to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry, President Affeld, we had unfortunately left off calendar items. I just thought we'd go over these dates real quick if we could.
Yeah, just, just a review for the board and anyone listening to the video. Our winter break with no school is going to be in effect from December twenty-first until January the third. School resuming on Monday, January the fourth. A reminder to everyone that I believe January fifth, Close of Business Day, is our deadline for applications to fill our one-board vacancy. January sixth, I believe, is a COC meeting on Wednesday evening, which is, I think, a part of a new schedule for the COC at five thirty PM. I'm realizing I don't have the city schools meeting, which I believe is the, I believe it's set for the first Thursday usually. Is it the first Thursday or first Tuesday? Is it the first Thursday, or first Tuesday?
We have one in January.
There is one in January, I don't have the date in front of me.
You think it's the seventh?
It may be the seventh, and I believe we are, there's conversation between district and city staff to actually hold that meeting in the new gym. Just advance notice to you. On that one, I will confirm that date. District offices are closed on December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth, and January first. Our next regular board meeting is January thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. We have a special Emory Unified Board Meeting on Thursday, January the first, at six PM, to interview candidates for the board vacancy. We do have a hearing with board members on February first and second, from six to ten PM. Just a reminder to the board on that calendar item. And I unfortunately will be at a conference, a large curriculum conference put on by the, I believe it's the County Superintendents Association on February the twenty-fourth. So I won't be here for that board meeting, just wanted to give the board a heads-up, and that Ms. Steele, I've asked to help facilitate my part of the meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Now, we will adjourn to closed session.